I'd like to call this August 3rd, 2023 Board of Education Work Session Meeting to order. We can all rise, or George can do the roll.
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Staubcheck?
Here.
Mrs. Howson?
Here. We all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda are district goals. Goals remain financial prudence, academic achievement and growth, and community engagement. As a board, we strive to measure all of our decisions against these three goals. Next is public comment. I don't think we, we have no slips for public comment. So we'll move on to our treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Howson. I have two items tonight, one discussion and one for your consideration. The first one, the discussion item, is the OSBA Capital Conference Delegate and Alternate Appointments for the November 13th OSBA Business Meeting, which is at during their capital conference in November. Tonight's just a discussion item, and then at our next meeting on August 24th, the board will need to appoint a delegate and a alternate if they so choose. Each Board of Education is entitled to send one delegate to the annual business meeting of the Ohio School Boards Association on Monday, November 13th. During the business meeting, delegates will vote on the selection of the OSBA President-elect and propose changes to the OSBA legislative platform. It is only through the collective insight and direction of our members that OSBA can speak as a unified voice. I'll turn it over for any discussion if there is any.
Does anyone have any questions for George? I know I've been the delegate the past two years representing Strongsville. Michelle has gone representing Polaris. Rich has done it many years before that. It is an interesting and educational way to see what goes on at the Ohio School Board Association. Sharon, you were there last year with us to attend the conference.
I would be willing to go as a, put my vote in.
To be the delegate?
Yeah, exactly.
Representing Strongsville? Okay.
I couldn't think of the word. Yes. Put my vote in, be a delegate. Yes.
Okay.
I would be willing to do that.
I'm not sure if I can yet, but okay.
And then I will add, although we have a delegate appointment for the business, business meeting, any board member can attend the entire conference and go to the track sessions and the professional development. So if any board member is interested, just let me know and we're done. Angelista, we can get board members registered and sign up.
Okay. So we'll vote at our next meeting then for our delegate?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And then the next item I have. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the Board of Education retain Ruth Ann Franzek as fiscal consultant to payroll and benefits. Time will be as needed and paid by invoice through accounts payable at a rate of $43.75 per hour. This is similar that we've done with our assistant treasurer positions as, as they left and during the transition to keep, keep them on, let's say, retainer as needed to ask any questions or consult them as needed. So this is one of those situations where I'd rather have it and not need it versus need it and not have it. What we have going on this month is new contracts for teachers going into place. And then also at the end of the calendar year, WT2s and 1095Cs. So just to have Ruth Ann available for the year.
Any questions for George? All right.
All right. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn it over to Dr. Iba.
Thank you, Ms. Howson. I don't have any items under my specific section this evening. So moving on to business services, we do have two items for your consideration. The first is the installation of security cameras. So be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education accepts the resolution clarifying board policy relating to installation of security cameras. So just to give some context, there's a law when you use federal funds and those federal funds for specific items over $2,000, you have to use prevailing wages, which is a rate of pay for individuals doing the work. The law excludes some things from prevailing wages. The installation of our security cameras is one of those things. But our policy is missing a phrase that would say and clarify that. That policy has been updated. It will be on the August 24th agenda for a first reading for the board to review and vote on. So this is basically saying, we are following the law, which is different than the policy, which are the rules we follow. So this is a caveat, says we're going to follow the law, not policy in this instance for the installation of our security cameras.
Can I see that this is an action item that we need to make a motion for? So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Staubcheck, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any questions? Discussion? Hearing none. George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Staubcheck?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Ms. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The second item, be resolved upon my recommendation that school bus transportation for the students listed in the exhibit be declared impractical. Due to the time, distance required to provide transportation, the cost of providing transportation in terms of equipment, maintenance, personnel, or administration, and the additional services, additional service unavoidably disrupts current transportation schedules. And that roster of those schools is in the exhibit. Any questions under business services? Moving on to curriculum, we do have a few items for your consideration. The first three all deal with revisions to the elementary, middle school, and high school handbook. That's something that was approved at the past meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to Jenny to give a brief update of what revisions have been made in such a quick turnaround, and then we'll go through those items specifically.
So thank, thank you, Dr. Iba. In regards to all of the handbooks, just again, as we read, reread through these things, sometimes things, we catch things again. And so one of those things was the bus safe riding rules. They seem to be a little redundant in a couple areas. So basically, we had the riding rules, and then we had a code of conduct, and it, it just didn't read well. So what we did was combine them together to make sure that they're, they're clear for what students are expected to do while riding the bus or even at their bus stop. So that was a change to all the handbooks. Another section was within the code of conduct, number 11. It also, it stated show of affection or sexual misconduct. We took out show of affection just because we don't want it to, you know, some of our elementary students are kind of touchy with our teachers sometimes, meaning they just want a hug or something, and that's not what we're intending. We're intending that, you know, any kind of sexual conduct or, or anything like that, that's the intent of it. So again, sometimes our, our younger kids want to hug teachers, and, and that's not what we're going for. Also, communication devices, this one, we just really updated the language. It used to say portable communication devices and switched it to just communication devices. We realized that especially for our older students, I mean, I think we all have some sort of smartwatch on, that they are going to wear those things, and, and that's okay. It really is when it interferes with the school day and they're communicating on it or texting on it constantly and interfering with school, or taking photos, you know, of other people or videotaping other things, that's really what is against our rules. And so, you know, we realize you may wear a smartwatch, you may have your cellphone on you, and various schools have, have guidelines for that. And we realize that that is what's happening today in our world. We just don't want it to interfere with the educational process. So that's the goal of, of that. So changed the wording there a little bit to really reflect actually what we do and, and what we expect from our students. And then just along those lines, one change in the high school handbook. They instituted last year where students, if the teacher requested it, would need to put their cellphone in a carrier, that all students would do that. So that is in there that they may request that. I can't promise every day, every, every teacher requires that, but that is an option if, if they feel that they need to do that to control the class and make sure students are engaged in the lesson. So that's in there as well. And then just a few, you know, tweaks to the language in the high school. As we looked at it again, there was just some title changes that we needed to make. Strongsville Heights, for example, Strongsville High School is not an open campus. Under leaving the building, we added those things, a title change, a personnel change. With the class schedule changes, with drops and adds, just kind of cleaned up that language a little bit there. That is another change. Prearranged absences cleaned up that language to make it more clear. And then I think the last thing that I didn't mention yet is under hall passes, no student is permitted to be in the hall without a pass at the high school. And I do believe middle school has something similar. So those are the major changes. Since the last time you approved them.
May I make your comment?
Sure.
Just, this is a great time as a reminder to parents, if you're listening, to review these handbooks before school starts, especially the bus sections. I know bus rules are there for safety reasons. So if you can just take the few minutes, you sign off that you've read them, but please make sure you look at them and are ready and have your students ready for the first day at school. Thank you.
Thank you. So under curriculum report, under item one, be resolved upon my recommendation that the following revision be made. Revision to the agenda from July 13th, 2023, G Superintendent's Report Curriculum, number two, Strongsville Elementary School Student Handbook. The next item is the same, same changes, but that's under item three for Strongsville Middle School Handbook. And item three is the same revision to that same agenda under item four, which was the Strongsville High School Student Handbook. On item number four of the current agenda, be it resolved upon my recommendation that permission be granted to the Strongsville High School Boys and Girls Cross Country Teams to attend an overnight camp. The camp will take place August 6th to 10th at Lakeside Historic Village in Lakeside, Ohio. Transportation will be provided by parents, and costs associated with the trip will be paid by participating students. And finally, under number five, be it resolved upon my recommendation that Strongsville City Schools pays to purchase letters, participant material bundles, print, and one-year licenses to train teachers and staff at a total cost of $57,456. Again, this is a priority of the board, the letters training. It's training our elementary K to three teachers, intervention specialists, a variety of others in the science of reading. It also meets the dyslexia law that's in place to have highly trained teachers. It's also, if you've paid attention to the governor's initiative of science of reading, letters is the science of reading. So we are in year three of the three-year training program. But this also includes new teachers that are new to the district, as well as new people that have to be trained because of the dyslexia law. Any questions on the curriculum report?
We'll need to figure out a way to go to the governor and get a refund or a kickback, or a kickback might not be the best way to describe it. But one of, one of the things the governor is doing is, is putting some money where his mouth is, and we've already made that investment, which is the right thing to do. But we'll have to figure out a way to get credit for it.
Moving on to student services, we have two items. The first, be resolved upon my recommendation that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into an agreement with Monarch School of Belfair Jewish Children's Bureau for the special education related services for placement of a student with disabilities for the upcoming school year for the amounts of $95,172 and extended school year at $7,931 for a total cost of $103,103. The second item is maximum healthcare services. Be resolved upon my recommendation that the Board of Education enters into an agreement with maximum healthcare services, who operates a healthcare staffing agency and employs licensed healthcare personnel to provide personnel to supplement nursing services for a preschool student. Any questions for the student service report? All right, I'll turn it over to Jenny for the human resource report.
Thank you. Under human resources this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. Under number one, we have a reduction in force for non-certificated staff member. Under number two, resignations for non-certificated staff. Under three, we have the retirement of non-certificated staff. Under four, appointments for certificated staff. Five, appointments for non-certificated staff. Six, appointments for certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Under seven, appointments for non-certificated athletic supplemental contract. Under eight, appointments for certificated supplemental contracts. Under nine, changes in hours for non-certificated staff. Under 10, changes in status for non-certificated staff. 11, contract recommendation for a certificated staff member. Under 12, we have the stipend for video truck assistant. Under 13, we have volunteer coaches. 14 is a correction to the June 29th agenda. It was basically a change in dates that we needed to change. That was a mistake there. So instead of saying, you know, 23, 20, 22, 23, we're changing it to 23, 24. And then 15 is another correction. This is from the June 30th, 2022 agenda, and it was just something that we just didn't update. We had one go out on maternity leave and one covered for her. So it was just a miss. And then finally, under 16, this is a change for an appointment for certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Due to the new contract, there is one assistant coach at the middle school. So that's, it reflects that change. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Jenny? With that, I'll turn it over to our Director of Instructional Technology, Dave Binkley, to lead a discussion item with the board.
Good evening. One of Scott's cables here. There we go. All right. Yeah, there we go. So I'm here tonight with, with Denny and Jason to kind of talk about SES Game Day. It's an internal name we've been using so that we can talk about streaming our athletics as there's been some changes, and we have some questions and some recommendations. So to kind of give you an idea of what we're currently having in our district, so we have SES TV. It's a free serving, a streaming service to our community. It streams on our district website. They have the Boxcast app. They have the streaming services, sticks like the Fire Stick or Apple TV that they can get to it. And then our primary focus for this is our district events, like our concerts, performances, board meetings, ceremonies, district, or like building meetings as well. We do stream some athletic competitions, just not a lot. And the reason why for that is actually the last bullet. It does require at least one staff member, and then generally a team of volunteers, like my son right here, at one of Scott's summer camps that he did, to run the cameras for us so that we can get the multiple angles that we need to get a good showing for our families. We use Boxcast to do this, and it's managed by the technology department. So we do use Huddle currently as a streaming service in our district. We use it in conjunction with a YouTube plugin that they have. We have it in two locations. You see the picture here. This is taking a screenshot from YouTube in our high school gym. So you can see volleyball and basketball in our gym, and an occasional wrestling match as well. The other camera is at Catan Stadium, so our football games, lacrosse, when we have soccer there as well. These are unmanned cameras. They're AI, so they auto-track, they go left to right using the software inside of them. They either have anywhere from two to four mini cameras or lenses in them that allow them to go back and forth. And this is managed by the athletic department, but supported by us. We install them, and you know, we're Denny's first line of, of help if something goes down before Huddle really will jump in with anything. Some issues that we have with Huddle that's coming up. Huddle is discontinuing this free service. They have purchased a paywall program, so they're kind of forcing everybody to go that way. This does limit the amount of sports that we can, or sport programs that can be seen from our community and families, because we're only in two locations. And there's really not a lot of support from Huddle when it comes to when things break down. At least not without a lot of, you know, troubleshooting and going through, and then really have to get deep into an issue before they really will help us out. So the new, actually, before I go forward, any questions about our current services between what we do with Boxcast and YouTube and Huddle? So what Denny, Jason, and I have been working on with Huddle is something that we've been, I've been talking about internally really as SES Game Day. Since Huddle acquired the paywall service Blue Frame, which creates an online streaming paywall service for us. As you can see at the bottom of the screen, there's a mock-up that I created using our YouTube image and their home site as well. So this is what it would kind of look like for our family members. So the primary focus for these will be sharing our district athletic competitions in these areas for the sports that have the AI-generated program that follows. You can utilize the T1 Sports website for the streaming of the events. This would be a joint venture between athletic department and sec department right now. And these streams can be automated, so Denny could, or Jason, or myself could go onto any computer and say, for the volleyball game in two weeks, we want the cameras to be on from 4:00 to 9:00, and go. And it could be as low maintenance as that. Or there are some added features that we can have, like a scoreboard and a couple other features I'll talk about a little bit later, actually, a couple bullets, that allows us with one person running it to have a lot more of a true, like, sporting event feel like you would watch on TV or any of the other streaming services. And that, one of those additional things that we could do is potential revenue stream. They do have an opportunity for like sponsor logos that you can put in a corner that rotates through. That could, that could help, you know, pay for the service itself. So a breakdown of where we are now to where a possible new contract would get us. So right now, like I said, we have two cameras at the high school gym and at Catan's. In the high school gym in the fall, we have girls volleyball. In the winter, we have boys and girls basketball. And we can do wrestling in there too. Mainly, it just turns off the AI and it just points right to the middle, so you can get the middle mat. And then you can get boys volleyball in the spring. Outdoor, we have football in the fall, and then boys and girls lacrosse in the, in the spring. With the proposed contract that we're working with Huddle on, would expand it to six cameras. We would add a camera at the middle school main gym, which would allow us to see girls volleyball at the middle school level. And then in the winter, we can see boys and girls basketball and wrestling as well, the center mat when they're set up there. A fourth camera outdoor at, at the middle school Serpentine Field, so we can see the events going on there, just like we would at the high school. Then there's actually two other cameras that they're just recently come out with, right? They're called Focus Flex. They're outdoor portable cameras. So we attach them to tripods, we get them out, we set them up. They use a Wi-Fi hotspot kind of signal and sends it, the game's out that way. So we can go to Foltz Field for soccer. And what's nice is these cameras right now are only for soccer. They told us that hopefully by winter, that it'll be able to do baseball and softball for the upcoming spring. And we're looking into it with them if we can have the same kind of functionality if they're inside a gym. So, and George talked about this, when we do our middle school events, we separate the, the main gym and the aux gym, but we don't have a camera in the aux gym. Maybe we can use one of these portable cameras and use that AI software. We haven't quite got a response back from them yet on that, but we're looking into it with them because that would help reach more families and more, more teams being shown. Yeah.
Is there the option of, I know, like Foltz Field, for example, in the summertime, there's different leagues that utilize those fields. Is there the ability to rent out the portable ones to other places? Or does it strictly have to be Strongsville schools?
That, I don't, I have not read the contract discerning that. So what this does is it's a paywall service for our athletics and our, technically, it's our facilities as well. So if we rented out the service, I don't know what kind of agreement we'd have to come to. Because we'd have to, because it's a paid service. So I don't know what kind of payment thing you'd have to go into and the legality of doing an external event.
I was wondering if it was like our facilities, like if it's at the elementary school gyms, for example, and there's something going on out there, if we're able to show that and somehow.
That I don't know, because I think the contract mostly just discerns about athletic competitions. So, and for our, our district athletic competition. So something we could look into and see if that would be a possibility.
And something else that I told Dave that I wanted to look into is, from a conference perspective, if we're at an away game Friday night for football, to take one of the portable cameras and set it up so our fans can use our service and not pay for another school service. That, that might be a conference thing that I have to work through with them, but I'd rather have our families use our service than go and use someone else's and pay for someone else's service.
And that, that depends on what the contractual language is for that. But another big benefit building off of that would be, let's say that our soccer team is going away to another school district, that they don't have these streaming services. Then we could possibly partner with the school and talk about, if we're going to stream the game on, on your fields, maybe we can come to an agreement about that. So there, there are other avenues that we can talk about that uses our identification as an athletic competition for our district to possible get other funds and, and different viewership. So with, go ahead.
Do we think that by doing this, we will lose ticket sales to these things? Or people will then choose to watch it versus actually go and attend?
Personally, I don't, because only people in my mind that would not come to a game, that's going to come to a game, is maybe a fair-weather fan. I believe this is going to reach a different audience. Maybe like the grandparents that live a half hour away or an hour away. Or maybe they're not as mobile as they would like. Even if they're right down the road, they don't have to worry about parking and walking. They can watch the stream service there. Also, you think about our middle school, which is currently an untapped audience. Timing of the athletics at middle schools is an issue for a lot of parents. They either have to take off work, or they go to work early, or they have to promise to go back after the event. So this could be a thing that some of our parents that have a strict thing, they can, you know, put the fee on and watch that from work if they had to. I think it's reaching a different audience, and it would only, like I said, it would only take away that fair-weather fan, that it's a Friday night, it might rain. I have nobody in this contest, but I just like going to watch Friday football. Well, guess what? You could still pay the fee, and you could still watch our game from the comfort of your home, but it, those who want to come to a game are going to come to a game. So just kind of a breakdown of this, really, what teams that we cover numerically. Currently, we cover five sport programs, the high school indoors at, at the high school, and three programs at Catan Stadium. And we cover no middle school teams. But with the, the current, or the contract that we're looking into, it would jump to be adding four middle school teams, our programs at the main gym, one program at the, their Serpentine Field, and then adding two high school teams for each individual flex camera, which would really have us go from eight programs that are currently, be able to be watched by our community members or family members to 17. So we're doubling how many programs can now be viewed. And also maybe help our kids with some of their recruiting videos, that they're not getting mom and dad's phone out there. But the high school will move from eight to 12, and then we're going to go from zero to five for the middle school. So I, I think it's going to be interesting. Mathematically, it's a 112% increase in coverage of our teams, if those of you like numbers. So now we're going to get into the financial analysis of this, which kind of comes to the question that was asked. It's a 70/30 gross split with Huddle. So whatever we sell is split 70/30, and then from there, the 70% is where we have to calculate our net revenue. So for example, if something was $1, Huddle would get 30 cents. The credit card processing fee is an approximation, don't quote me on this, but approximately, it'd be about 4%, so it'd be 4 cents. And then the district would get 66 cents for every dollar sold. Based off of our current ticket sales of $10, for them to have an event ticket to watch like a Friday night football game, or to get access to the camera for like- or to get access to the camera for like the volleyball games that are going on for a day because it's a, it's an event stream. So if you buy, if I remember correctly, you buy the freshman game at four o'clock in that gym. You would also have access to that camera for the JV and varsity game as well, um, because it's the way the stream is set up. So that's ten dollars. So if, if we had one event ticket sold for ten dollars, uh, we would net six dollars and sixty cents. And, um, based on the information that Huddle gave Denny and I, and Denny reached out to some of our, uh, local schools and other schools that use this. There's an annual pass option that we would like to, um, provide, which would be a hundred and fifty dollars. This would give whoever purchased this access to all the cameras in all the seasons. From what we saw, there was another option for a monthly pass. But overall, there was no true financial gain and a number of contests really didn't warrant in, in our thought process of that being of any value to anyone. So it's really the event versus the annual pass.
I have another question.
Yeah.
Not being familiar with Huddle, is this like Netflix where you can have like multiple devices in a home that can log into it or can they only do one or?
The, it's, it does an IP lockdown. Um, and I believe the number is two, two things, but not concurrently.
So what Huddle is trying to do is the NFHS network, which runs most of the high schools, you know, cameras to compete with that. Huddle is trying to match it. So how that works is, hey, if I buy this game pass or this daily pass, I can only use it. I can't send it to my grandma that lives in Florida and, and have her use it.
Your mom and dad would need separate ones if they had different.
Correct, correct. Because as soon as they log in with what your credentials are, it boots you off. So, and that's how this would be similar. So a family technically could, if they want to screen share it to a TV and just have everyone watch it right there, they could. But if they want to give their login to another person, it's going to boot them off as soon as another person logs in.
I more so thought like mom can make it to this game, dad can't make it to this game. She can use his login if he made it to the game and she didn't and she's at work.
In, in theory, that would work because they're not logged in at the same time. So it's not device specific. It's only one person can use that login at a time.
Is, is.
From how you understand it, correct. So the idea would be, hey, if two of us are going to go to the game, then we each need to buy our own ticket. If two of us are going to stream it and we're not in the same place, we need to buy two separate streaming tickets.
Any other questions about this?
The only comment I would make is, is a monthly fee may be more palatable for cash flow reasons. Versus coming up with a hundred and fifty dollars at once.
Yeah. The other option that we considered was a game day, a monthly, an annual, and then even a seasonal. And would a fall season pass be more enticing? Because then if you have a son who plays football, a daughter that plays volleyball, it's now a seasonal pass and not just a game or, you know, monthly. So that's something else that we could consider.
Does it work for fairly well? I know because I was, I streamed a lot of like my granddaughter playing volleyball and it's through that, um, it begins with a B. It's like Balltopia or something. And you sign up, same idea as this. You log in.
That's a different program.
But it didn't always work. It was frustrating. Like you couldn't always get what they said. So.
And that's the, with this program, we haven't had, I guess, knock on these big wood tables. The issues that we've had with Huddle hasn't been the streaming of an event, but it's been like a network connection on our end of like the filter picking it up and then blocking it, um, things like that. When we've set up the previous streams, it's gone to YouTube to no problem. Or like when we've used the Huddle camera for other things, it hasn't had any of those issues. And that's what's different, I think, from us. And I don't, not too familiar with Balltopia. I know my son has played on, on basketball and they kind of used it there before. This is using all of our, all of our cameras, currently our indoor cameras, camera and our stadium camera. And the additional ones, if we got those, are hardwired. So they're always having access to the internet. The flex ones will be dependent on either a hotspot or a wifi from another device. And that's where I, first, I would believe some of the, the issues that you could have come into play with because if you're in a cinder block gym, it's probably not going to have the best wifi signal or, or, or a mobile signal. So unless they're on the interior network, that's where you're going to get some of that, that spotty service, um, for things not being on. It will require us, and we were talking about this last week, I think, Jason and I. We're going to have to do a better job of labeling which games are where, especially for our middle school. Cause we don't want a parent to buy like a day pass for the middle school gym and their kid's playing in the back gym and the camera's only in the front. So just when we go to make our schedules, we have to be a little more clear about what teams are in what areas of the gym, um, so we don't have that frustration.
And making sure that they, both teams have equal time in that main gym so that the same team isn't always in the back not getting that coverage.
Yeah. And from what Jason talked about me last week, he, um, the teams are like the same grade that play at the same time and they tend to flip every other contest or something like that. So he's done a good job in the past of doing that. But yeah, I would, I would be sad too if my kid was always in my back gym.
Well, you, you probably get a lot of complaints.
Yes.
Especially if you spent money on it.
Yes. And so from that, I want to kind of talk about kind of where the current contract is and what the additional contract that we're kind of coming to you guys about. Currently the contract that you guys approved was for about thirteen thousand dollars. Um, that's was signed and it's already in, um, from a previous board meeting. The expanded contract would be for thirty three thousand dollars. So the contract difference is twenty thousand dollars. Excuse me. Then there are a couple different pieces of a technology we're going to have to get to make sure that we're truly compatible and up and running. While the, the program they have, um, works with both Windows computers and Apple's computers. They've designed it specifically for Apple. And so there's a couple additional, uh, features on there that would make it nicer to have if we had an Apple device that could do that. But we can use our Windows devices as, as a possible solution or as a backup at another location. Um, and there's some other miscellaneous techniques. Um, what is nice about the program, it could take in additional camera feeds. So like, we're not limited just to the Huddle camera. So like Scott, um, and his student crew can still do Friday night football games. What we would do is they would feed everything into the truck and then he would take a line from the truck and put it into the computer. And that would be a camera choice. So he could choose to go between the Huddle camera or his, his truck, which he can control all the other cameras from. So we're not taking away an opportunity from our students. And so that's, and that's something I thought was really important. When we started having this conversation, I actually told Denny after we talked to Huddle first time, I'm not, I don't want to move forward if it's going to take away our student opportunities. Cause we'll just find ways to get more students at more events if we need to. But since the program does allow us to add additional cameras, um, I thought it was a great, great, um, opportunity for us. So we're looking at, question?
Does it add to student opportunities?
Right now it will not take away anything that we're currently doing. And what is a possible additional opportunity is we could have, let's say we have a, a game worker, which we'll talk about in a second, working the laptop for the scoreboard. We could have an additional camera set up somewhere like for beef roll footage, like in the stands or at a foul line or just picking out other things in, at the game. And then they could switch between the Huddle camera and the student ran camera. So we can use things with maybe Brian Benz class for sports management, um, or other students, um, that works with, uh, Scott and, and his crew of like Susan Kerr or, or Don, um, that can come in and work with students as well. So we could create other opportunities that wouldn't require the whole truck or, you know, a super elaborate, I don't want to say super elaborate, but an elaborate setup like Scott has right now behind you with the, the mixer boards and all the additional equipment.
Do we need additional equipment to do that or is that, is all of that possible with what you're, what you're proposing?
If, long as we have, we do have stuff in-house to do that, that little switcher box that Scott's using, that you see the little red light on, on with the white lights. We could just put a camera to that and that can send the feed to the laptop. Cause none of our cameras can feed directly into the, uh, laptop without a converter. That could be our converter. So we can literally just switch between that camera and the Huddle camera in the program itself.
When you said student ran cameras, I was thinking like weddings when people used to put disposable cameras on tables and it just could be a prop.
No, I mean, we, we have some pretty nice cameras. So I hope that's, well, we've had, we've had some accidents over the years with cameras. But I mean, it's, it's all about them getting the opportunities and things happen.
I meant more so the footage you would get.
I do think another opportunity for students is this allows us to do, you know, play-by-play with students. If we have students that want to get into that, this allows them to do a play-by-play for the audience on our new Huddle system.
That was my next question.
Correct.
Yep.
Well, that would be awesome.
Yeah.
To just have the video feed, I'm curious what the, what the audio options are.
So, um, right now there is a generic microphone built into the cameras that you can hear the, the general gym or the stadium, which has been a problem at times at the high school during football games. But overall, um, whatever, like if we're doing the whole setup with the truck, we can hook microphones up and it'd be fine. With this, we would need another kind of converter or attachment. But we could easily set up, um, you know, kind of like a podcasting thing for, I've seen some as cheap as two hundred dollars and some really nice ones. They even have Bluetooth capabilities for like five or six hundred that you could connect the microphones to and then have, um, that go to the computer as well. So we could do, there's a lot of opportunities that we could, it's just a matter of getting the technology and then finding the students to do it kind of on a regular basis, hopefully.
We could even tap into the PA announcer too. So I do believe that's an option.
Oh, and the camera feeds also, um, for the indoor cameras are calibrated to see the scoreboard at all times. So you have the scoreboard in the bottom left, uh, and we have it set at the bottom left screen at all times. But there is options with the program that you can add your own little sports sticker at the bottom. That could be images or, um, just words with the scores going on.
You would need someone to run that.
You would need someone to run that, which comes into the next conversation, which George is already getting ahead of me, um, the game worker aspect. So, uh, to have someone there unless they volunteer, um, doing our, uh, from what George provided to me, the four and a half hours for an event. This would be approximately, say a hundred and fifty events that we could cover up to a year with this. Between all of our high school and middle school sports and our, and our different levels between seventh grade up to varsity. At the rate of fifteen dollars per hour would be about twelve thousand dollars for the year. And so that would mean that the total financial commitment would be thirty seven thousand dollars. So that would make us have the swing and I don't think I put that there, did I? No, I didn't. So it'd be twenty four thousand, uh, no, twenty five, thirty seven thousand dollars total financial commitment. This year additional to the thirteen thousand that we've already paid.
Additional twenty four thousand?
No, additional twelve thousand. So it'd be thirty seven total. Yeah, my slides are right. I got it in my own head. But the idea is that's the possible maximum. Um, so like if we're doing a game with the truck and the crew with Scott, we wouldn't use that because the Scott and, and our video team is doing that. Or, or when we do some of our events with our, our whole crew with, um, our other video truck, uh, people that you wouldn't use that. And there may be some events where we just set it up and, and just let it run and the scorekeeper is just making sure that the lights are on. So it depends on the, on the events and, and what's really going on or what our intentions are with, as elaborate as we want to get with it. And just to give you some example of revenue projections to help kind of understand where we can go with this is, if we look at the additional twenty five thousand dollar financial commitment we thought about without the game workers. If we sold a thousand single event tickets at ten dollars and a hundred and ninety annual passes at one fifty, we would make that twenty five thousand dollars back this year. We wanted to talk about how to make the whole thirty seven thousand back this year, um, and kind of break even, which is the goal is, my whole goal is, can we at least break even from this? So that way, um, we're not, you know, truly depleting our financial services every year because if we're putting money into this, we're taking money away from another project. So, um, if we up that to fifteen hundred, uh, single event tickets and two hundred and seventy five annual passes, that would get us to thirty seven thousand dollars to break even if we use the full amount that we allotted for game workers.
I think another point to this too is we are anticipating a lot of away schools, you know, paying for these game subscriptions, not necessarily our families or our, you know, staff members, community members, whatever the case may be. But if mentors coming here, we are anticipating that mentor fans are going to want to probably buy that and not be here. So that's where a lot of these numbers are coming from. Yes, it may seem high, but if there's a hundred and fifty events, the away team's probably going to purchase a lot of those because we're already here home.
When I looked at this earlier, I didn't think about that. How do you plan on promoting it to get the word out that we have it?
So every game that we host, I send a informational sheet to all the away schools. And I say, hey, you know, these are the ticket prices, these are locker rooms, these are, you know, the bench alignments and here's our online tickets and here's our online streaming. So I send that to them, um, it goes out, then they just promote it to their fans if they put it on their website. And then on our website, we have an option to now put live stream as a actual header. Um, and not just under our more tab, which is where it's at right now.
So just as a practical example of a parent with high school athletes, all, all I know how to do as a parent is go to what the AD from the homeschool sends us to our AD to tell us to do. So it's very easy marketing and advertising. Um, as you said, do I really want to drive to Mentor in the middle of winter? Maybe I'll pay the ten dollar ticket and, uh, here's what the Strongsville AD said I need to do to do that. So it's pretty seamless.
Can I go back for just a second to the game workers? Can you give us some more examples of what those people would be doing? I heard a lot about the students and that would be volunteer and learning opportunities for them. So are we talking about like Scott and other team members or who are we talking about?
These game workers would be, um, new people hired to run the production software on the laptop. So if Scott, uh, and, and his team is not available to do it, or they're not planning to do it, like, like say high school volleyball, we should have someone there man, manning the laptop to make sure that the, the logo rotation is going, that the feed is going on and, and, and just managing that aspect.
So we could do it without it, but that's.
Correct. Correct.
Offers additional opportunities.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, so the sustainability of this, um, the idea is technology is going to help the, the athletic department by kind of fronting the money this year. Um, and then hopefully through the quarterly payments, we make our money back so we can continue on with our, our planned projects. Um, and then we'll hopefully have a little bit of surplus and then we'll stock that and split it between athletics for some of their needs. Some of the special projects that, that the tech department would like to do and then keep some of it as well to pay for the next contract. And so every year that next contract fund is going to get bigger and bigger and doing some, you know, rough estimations of, let's say that we get a five thousand dollar net surplus. I'm, I'm just, we're going to run a number out because it's easy to, to play with because it's thirty five thousand a year. That in theory, in seven years, this could be self, self-funding. And we shouldn't have to be able, we shouldn't have to put any more money into it unless we have to buy a new piece of technology or something that to replace, or something on our end. Because with the contract, if a camera goes bad or they come out with a new camera, they replace the camera. So this would mainly be any of our own equipment that we would need to replace would be on top of that. An additional avenue, um, for revenue for this is, um, this is a mock-up of what it could look like. Um, this was a YouTube game last year with the boys' basketball game. You see our scoreboard in the bottom left. But up at the top right, you can put a logo block. And that logo block can be a rotating logo block. So the idea is that, um, any of the ads or sponsorships that we sell comes directly to the schools. It comes to us. It would be to, to us to control. Um, Huddle gets nothing of that. So what I, the idea is we can create a, a process that we can have logos in the top corner and it could rotate every ten seconds. A new logo comes up. If we did this for thirty six sponsors, so thirty six logos, that would be a six minute cycle, you know, every ten seconds. That we could have. That we could have every sponsor have their logo be viewed 10 times an hour. It's like those digital billboards on the highway, um, or some of those benches you've seen in some malls too. So the pricing structure that Huddle provided us, um, which we thought was pretty fair for the first year, at least see what, where we're at, would be $250 per logo slot per season. But if they bought two seasons worth, they would get the third season for free. So basically be $500 to get your logo on all of our streams for the whole year. Um, and it's not by sport, it's just by season. So we could have someone who does, let's say, football equipment or, or, um, and they, and they wanna do just advertisements in the fall. They can pay the $250 and do that in the fall. Um, but let's say we have a, maybe a local company here that's, that is a mom and pop shoe store, and they wanna put that logo up for all year, that would be $500 that would come in. And that's, the idea is, I'll get to that in one second. Um, so with this, uh, possible revenue stream, if we sold all, all the logos, it'd be 108 individual logos for the whole year, that would be $27,000 that this would bring in. But if we did, um, all of them were annual, so everyone, it was just everything was sold for the whole year, it would bring in $18,000 in additional revenue. So the idea that, that Denny brought up and Jason brought up in our meetings about this was, we should rely on our boosters to help sell these because they have the partnerships with the businesses already. Um, and this is where we can bring in all of our boosters, our athletic boosters, our S I M B boosters, maybe individual teams can sell these, and then our thought process was if they bring that revenue stream into us, bringing in that money for that logo sponsor, we could split the money with that team. So let's say they sell, someone sells, I know for a lot of advertisements, I think S I M B sells, it's really good, it's Dairy Queen relationship. So they sell a Dairy Queen ad for $500 for the year, we would keep 250 in, in, in our pot, and then we would give the I, S I M B the 250, the other 50% of what we brought in for that advertisement. So in theory, if we co-shared or co, or they, if they sold it, we split the revenues for all the annual logos, it'd be $9,000 we would bring in, um, for just having a logo in the top corner every, you know, for every stream. So it's just a possible revenue. Um, once we get our feet wet, um, there's another district that sold advertisement before games and after games, um, up to 30 seconds for X amount of money as well. But that, I think this was a, a low entry point, but a good reward for us for getting to learn the program and, and creating some of those relationships too.
There's also the possibility as this evolves to sell quarterly. Hey, if you want your ad up for the entire first quarter, it's gonna go up, it's gonna be this amount. And then as soon as the second quarter changes, we can change that out and put another logo up there. Uh, schools do a 30-minute pregame, and all they do is they flash these ads the entire 30-minute pregame, you know, prior to the live stream of the contest. Um, and then they also do that afterwards. Um, as I started to think about this, it could be a way for us, hey, on senior night, every senior's gonna be, you know, on their 30 minutes prior to the game, and it's gonna show a recap of their, of who they are, you know, school of choice, you know, um. I think the possibility is kind of endless. It's really how we're gonna manage it as a staff and make sure that we're doing what we're saying, you know, for our sponsors that we're gonna do.
How did you decide on the, um, 10-second example?
Um, for me, um, I was looking at what digital billboards do and some other sponsorships that I've seen online. It goes anywhere from four to 15 seconds. So I was thinking of a 60-second minute, and how do we break that down? So I, that's what I did, 10 seconds. And then it's a six-minute cycle, which would be 10 cycles per hour. Um, that's the math nerd in me.
Thank you.
But we could do more and have a longer duration or a shorter, shorter duration. Uh, it's just what we would, uh, to not overwhelm ourselves if we started this process.
So other schools are using it?
They, it, it's fairly new, but there are districts that have started it last spring that already started.
Can we get some information on whether they've been successful?
We do have.
Some of the numbers, there's nothing wrong with them, but there's nothing to base them on.
Yeah, the, through our meeting with, um, our representative Tom, um, through our, our, I guess that'd be Webex calls. Um, they were, he talked about a school in, I guess, Southern Ohio, Wheelersburg, um, really small, kind of rural school district. Um, they, they grossed $25,000 last year. So a district like that with that population, I, I would assume that us, with our size and our community, we would be fairly safe. But we can pull in some more numbers from other districts.
I know our booster club has been soliciting sponsors for years now. Have you talked to the boosters to see how we can kind of work together?
We have started that conversation with them, yes. Yep.
Um, the other thing that, um, I think that Dave mentioned is our current Huddle contract expires in July of 2024. So whether this is an addendum to the current contract for this year, um, that is one thing. Or if we just let the, our, our current contract expire, and then this is something that we begin next year. Our hope was this is something that we could begin this year, just, and maybe test it out and say, hey, it's not what we anticipated, it's not what we wanted. Um, and those are conversations that we've had with Huddle, hey, are we able to do this as a test year? Um, knowing that our contract expires, are we able to do this as a test year and just see what we can get from it? You know, before we ultimately move forward with it.
So the vision would be to do a one-year contract now. Let's say we like it, is it still one-year contracts or is it a larger chunk or how does that work?
So you've been working with them as, they've been doing three-year contracts. Um, but right now we have one year remaining on the contract that was signed around the pandemic time. So this would be an amendum to the current contract. Um, and then when we go to a new contract, it would either be for, um, I, I, I don't wanna say what the exact number is because I don't remember, but it would be an increase just for the base service or an increase to cover this expanded camera just as well. Because there's gonna be an increase no matter what next year. It's a matter of, is it something that we can generate enough money from to help cover the cost? Or is it something that we're gonna have to find, um, other, um, you know, funds from somewhere else to cover that, that additional cost? Long-term, I think this will help make it more sustainable. And even if this additional camera, the extra $35,000 a year that we could earn, could help reduce maybe even some of the costs that our athletic department's putting in and some of our individual teams are too. Um, but that's unknown at this time, just because we don't know how successful this would be. And I, and I feel at least in year one, we could break even easily. Um, with the, um, conversation of how much the game workers is going to eat into that part.
Do we have enough time, like, are we looking to have this set up for the first game of this fall season or do we need, are we gonna miss some?
So the way that it works, we have two cameras currently at the high school stadium and, uh, Tann Stadium, and then the high school main gym. Um, if we went ahead with this, we would not miss any games in those areas. We could get, because we, they would give us the ability to download the program and then we could start there. Um, last time we talked, it was a three-to-five week lead time for the additional cameras. So there may be some events that we can't get immediately when they start because of where we are now in our school year, are approaching our school year in the sports season. But once they come in, um, my team can install them. We already look at the locations. Um, we, there's a, a little bit of a hurdle that we're gonna have to get at the middle school. We'll have to have some, um, direct Wi-Fi access points because we can't run the cable across that road. Um, but we've already looked into those situations and kind of already seen what are the hurdles that we would have to overcome. But, um, the interior camera at the middle school would be no problem. Um, we just have to build some scaffolding to help bring the cable in across. Um, and at the outdoor facilities, as long as the hotspot that comes with it or that we'd have to provide with those cameras gets a signal at Foltz Field, which I know that we already used one for athletics there, then we should be no problem. So it's a matter of just getting it here and for us to get going.
The other, um, the other feature that's probably a big one that we forgot to mention is there, um, there's an on-demand. So if you miss a game, okay, you can go back and you can view it. Um, so it's not like, hey, if a parent's traveling and they're on an airplane and they can't watch the game, they can always log in and go back and view that. So there is that on-demand option for them. Um, you know, and that's kind of something that's added. If, if you guys really care, there is some added features that are gonna benefit our teams as well for that price, um, including video storage. They get unlimited storage for their practice videos, for their game films, for their breakdowns. Um, they send it to Huddle and, you know, Huddle does the data analysis for the teams. That cuts down from 12 hours to six hours with this new package. So they can turn around their stats quickly for their next game or for their next scout. So there's some behind-the-scenes stuff that also comes with this.
Is it O H, is it O H S A A that requires it?
Um, they don't require it. They use NFHS, but it helps us because for state tournament games, it allows us to live stream where a lot of places don't have live streaming for those options. Uh, but no.
Danny, but wasn't there something where I thought we had to exchange game film? I thought there was something.
Oh, Huddle, from a conference perspective.
From a conference perspective, we are required to have this.
We are required to use Huddle, yes.
So we're not, we're not duplicating anything, this'll just add on.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And one of the difference things that I noticed from this contract and from what the original, um, Pixel lock cameras with the NFHS was, if you go that route with their Pixel lock cameras and their paywalls are providing, they own the media rights to your game, which means we technically couldn't replay our own games if we wanted to. With this opportunity, we own the media rights to the games. Now, Huddle has the opportunity to use some of it in promotional material, but we own the rights to, to our own games, which I thought was very important, um, when we went through these kind of conversations. And last thing here, um, we're, we're kinda.
One quick geeky question.
Yeah.
Is one, is one Apple laptop enough?
Well, it depends on what we want to do with it. Um, if we wanna say that we have like the primary device for the extra features, then the one Apple device would be enough, and then we could use window devices for like maybe the off, off locations that are a little bit cheaper that we, if they get a little messed up or something like that, it won't be that bad, um, price point wise. Um, but if we wanna do all the additional features that they're good, they talk about, like, there's some additional features like instant replay and slow motion and, and some of those things that we're not looking at right now, we would have to have multiple Apple devices.
You're gonna need to have one device per, if you wanna go, if you wanna livestream two, two events at the same time.
You'll need two devices.
At that level, at that level, you'll need two devices.
But if we're doing just the logo rotation and the standard scoreboard or adding our own sports sticker at the bottom, um, that could be done with a Windows device, no problem. Uh, it's just some of the pretty things that, you know, Apple really promotes themselves on doing with their, with their, um, interfaces that we would have to have Apple MacBooks, um, for that.
Okay.
And we were even considering working with Huddle and saying, hey, is there an option where it can be preset? So as soon as it hits the end of the first quarter, it plays this display. And so that's a preset mode that we don't have to have a physical person there, you know, to manage, but it's a setting that we can set up for.
And one of the things that we're looking into too that we brought up was remote access. Um, right now, um, you have to be on the same network as the camera. So for our internal cameras and our stadium, that's not an issue. But for like the, the flex cameras, if we were at, um, Foltz Field or even far away enough from our building for our baseball, softball, they didn't pick up the Wi-Fi, they, the laptop has to be on the same network as the camera. Um, they're looking into the possibility of hopefully that long-term is we could do it inside the building and not have to have someone on location to run just the basic stuff. Um, but right now you're limited by location with the same Wi-Fi network. Um, anything else? Okay, so what we're asking, um, from, from the board at this meeting is really permission to move forward for the additional amendum to the contract for the $20,000 contract. And then, um, then in the next board meeting, we'll talk about approval for the single event ticket items or the annual pass streaming price structure, and we can look into the, the monthly and the seasonal that was mentioned. Um, and then, um, depending on how we do this, if we're just gonna make an amendum, um, this next one might, uh, we'd still have to come to the board for the amendum because the original contract was a multi-year contract, so you'll have to approve the amendum for that. Um, and then, uh, George will have to, um, get, oh, we'll have to ask you permission for, for the treasury to, um, change the rotary count that we have for the tech department, um, to suit this need instead of the need that it's currently suited for. Any questions?
Can you give us the contracts?
So in terms of direction for Dave moving forward, you know, Ms. Azam, what we're looking for is, hey, we've given you feedback, continue to work on it and bring it back to the board for, uh, action at the August 24th meeting. So we gotta have a little more time because this is the first Thursday of the month. Uh, or if there's another direction, uh, let, let us know, but that's, uh, turn it over to you to see if there's consensus on the guys to keep working and, uh, get things ready for the August 24th agenda.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments?
I do have one more question. If, when's our first football game? I don't know.
August 25th is our first home.
So we would miss the first.
No, we already have Huddle. We already have Huddle for the stadium.
Okay, so that would be, that's, that's why I'm just afraid of losing out on anything.
Yeah, so if, for the first game, if we get it approved that day for the, for everything, which would include the pricing structure and all that, in theory, if they let us download the program the next morning, it will be a, a tight turnaround for Scott because we use the production truck, truck for that to kind of learn that. But we wouldn't lose it in theory. Um, if all else fails, we could do our camera production as a backup to what the Huddle one is until Scott feels more comfortable with it. But in theory, we should, in theory, we shouldn't miss, um, the paywall opportunity, um, with this.
So no matter, I mean, to be clear, no matter what, the first home football game will be broadcast. It just depends on whether it will be free through BoxCast or whether it will be the paywall through this system. Is that correct or no? That's correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Just also clarify, and because of the delay in some of the other cameras, we would, whether we had this now or later, we would miss some of the other.
We would miss some of the volleyball and some of the soccer games with the flex camera.
Would you need anything before the, would you need anything now from the board prior to the next board meeting to get moving on?
Yeah.
To get this going, to be ready by August 25th, where?
I don't.
Or a consensus from the board?
Without a signed contract, I don't think they would do, um, I don't, we've been a good customer of theirs, but I don't know if they would do it on good faith. We can ask. Um, talk about how this meeting went and things like that and see if they would allow us to, to start moving forward with the cameras. If all fails, if it's a three-to-five week lead time, our next board meeting's in like three weeks. So, I mean, the cameras might not even be in till that time, so we would still miss about a week or so, and then we could put them up as soon as the next board meeting is approved. So that might, we could, we could call them and see if we can get that maybe gentleman's handshake.
Can you provide us the data of what we provide to the community for free now? Because it's, unless I'm misunderstanding it, we're, we're considering stopping providing it for free, and we're gonna start charging tickets for it.
The, the clarification is Huddle is stopping.
Correct.
Providing that for free, so we have to do something.
But when do we have to do something?
That's what, that's what I was getting at. Like, if, if we stop, uh, if we don't do this, does the football game end up behind a paywall and we have no system to manage that?
So how, how I understand it with them, our contract right now is good through the end of this year. So we would be able to still do it for free.
Oh, it's still free under this contract?
Correct. But, but we would have to, well, the YouTube plugin is not gonna be working though.
I think it still will because based off of the contract, which they, they tried to tell us that our contract was up as of August 1st. And I went back and looked at the previous contract and I said, it's not up until, until 2024. So they are honoring that. What they wanna do is start moving us towards the paywall system so it's up and ready to go. Um, and that, and then that would also include us getting baseball, softball, and all of the sports that we currently don't do. Um, that's what they really were hoping for with that contract. But to answer your question, it should still be free, and that's something that we'll follow up on just to make sure.
With, but after next year, it will not be.
Correct.
So it doesn't matter what we do or talk about, it's going away.
Correct.
Okay.
But to get that free service, I'm assuming we paid something to get that?
It's our YouTube channel.
Oh, so it's just.
Yeah, we, the, the current contract gives us the access to the, the plugin from Huddle to YouTube.
Okay.
Um, and but they, I believe they stopped, they may not have closed it yet, but from our conversations with Tom, they stopped. with Tom, they stopped servicing it, I guess. So if it breaks, it breaks, it goes down, it goes down. They won't really go forward with it, is what I gathered from our conversations.
So what, what would help me make a decision is to determine whether it's, whether time is of the essence or not and determine if, if we're potentially making a decision to change now, ahead of, ahead of a contractual deadline, to go from free to paid.
But we're also getting more. The, like the middle school, I always feel like they get left out. I think it's great that they'll get to have like streaming. So we're, we're, we would be going ahead a year, like nothing would change at all if we did nothing, right? I mean, just stay with these people and do the same amount of streaming and everything.
Yep, from how the current contract is written, yes.
But we aren't adding on to all those other things, all those other sporting events. So we're, we're not doing anything like that. We're just staying with the old.
We're staying with how, how our current system is right now with the two cameras.
Right.
And that's it.
Right.
Is there anything with the contract that we paid for the plugin that we could put towards the changing, like cutting our contract a year short?
I'll look into that. I don't, I don't want to call CNA, but I'll look into that.
You mean like something where it's like if we're cutting a year off of the contract that we agreed to, paid for, we can apply that to the new contract?
Well, I think something that maybe, I don't know if I said it earlier, but by doing the amendum to the contract, it's actually different than starting a whole new contract with them. So there could be a financial break.
Like a grandfather clause?
I don't know if a grandfather clause, but I, but we're only asking for the amount now to get the service with our current contract. If we ripped up the contract, it may be even a higher additional contract because we're starting from scratch with a whole new one compared to just adding on to what we currently have for the last year. I did not go into that because you were just talking about what do we need right now?
So this year would be twenty thousand, but then a new contract would be thirty-three.
Is that numbers or is that what we're hoping for?
No, that is what it would be because we already.
We already paid thirteen for the existing contract. So to amend the existing and get the additional services would be twenty. But then the year after, it would be the full thirty-three because we haven't paid anything in advance.
And will that include like our choral concerts and so, don't we televise?
Yeah, that's all, all our school events would still be done through Box Cast for free and all that. So that is not changing any of our academic or non-athletic extracurriculars. This is purely for our athletic events that are happening in locations where we have the Huddle cameras.
And I think what Dave and I talked about too is, so we'll get two contracts because another contract that they proposed to us was, hey, that, those kind of behind the scenes stuff with the teams, instead of a twelve-hour breakdown going to six, if they kept that at twelve, it might lower the cost for some of this stuff. I really don't think our teams care if they get the turnaround in twelve hours versus six. So, no, those are things that we can look at to try to get the cost lower for us too.
That's a good thing.
So just to be clear for, for Dave and Danny and Jason, does the board want them to bring back this, put on the twenty-fourth agenda, the specifics of what this would be and then you would discuss and vote? Or are you saying, hey, there's more information we want to know about, do it through my updates or, you know, come back to the twenty-fourth meeting and provide that update and then you'll decide from there? That's the one part that I'm unclear on, on what you would like to do.
Can we get those, can we put it on for the twenty-fourth and get those updates before then? Like in your update?
Yes, that's a possibility. That's a pathway to get there.
I, I mean, I'm comfortable with it. We, we need a contract to review to vote on. So if, if we get a contract, then we can review it and if as a board, we feel it's legitimate, we can approve it. And if not, we can say, we can punt and, and continue negotiating.
That's clear, thank you. Anything else for Dave or Danny or Jason, who's done a great job supporting from the back row? But very involved in the work, so yeah.
Can I ask Jason a question? Do you think the middle school parents would appreciate it?
I think so, absolutely.
We have a grandparent that will.
I, I'm a middle school parent and I would appreciate, grandparent, and I would appreciate.
Say that again?
I'd appreciate it.
Does your husband know this?
No, we need to tell him.
There's, there's a lot of four-thirty tip-offs, kick-offs.
Yeah.
It resonates with me, but I'm not a middle school parent anymore.
And there was a lot of people at, a lot of the, even at four-thirty, there was people that they were trying to get there. But I think they would appreciate it, yeah, I do.
And I know as a parent with hopefully a kid making a team this year, taking my daughter to dance.
Who's the coach?
I have no clue. I stay away from that. The idea though is that if I take my daughter to dance, like I, instead of stressing about getting back, I could sit in the parking lot and watch the game and then pick him up afterwards and talk to him about it. Like I'm not going to miss his event taking care of my other child.
And I love that on-demand feature. I think that's the great opportunity. And as you said, it was a passing comment, but for, for kids that are aspiring to play sports at the collegiate level, having that Huddle film available to, it's a different world now and they have to create their own media to share, I think that's a great service to our athletes as well. But great presentation to both of you. Thank you for.
I have one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm just trying to think of, this isn't immediate, but if there are other ways to involve other sports that might not take place in those locations, like one of the ones that wasn't mentioned at all is any of the running sports. And I understand the hurdles with doing that.
I solved it while we were sitting here. I'm like, we just have to put a GoPro or have somebody in the gator filming from the gator.
Horrible Ryan on Facebook.
You could use those portable cameras and set them up at like the mile markers or even at the finish line.
If we could involve, the more we can involve, I think, the more equitable it is to our parents and our students and it'll, I mean, it's just a great opportunity for those kids that might do the not-so-well-attended sports to have an audience that they don't typically get.
So the portable cameras, they go on a tripod and the tripod goes up twenty-five feet. So if you have two of those set up, you know, different mile markers, a finish line, whatever, there should be plenty of coverage to, for, you know.
The only issue with that right now is those programs set up for specific AI games. So you have to, they, you have to get them calibrated for events and venues. If there's, and I, I don't know, you might be more familiar with this than I am, but if you'd have to be, you have to turn off the AI of the cameras or else every time someone moves over here, the whole camera would shift over to see some mom and dad or little brother over here and miss the mile marker. So it's part of the software too that we'd have to figure out if we could turn it off or not and just have it like a stationary camera. But right now, the sports that was highlighted in that presentation are the sports that their AI programs are geared towards to follow.
People getting motion sickness watching you.
Any other questions? Well, thanks again, Dave and Danny. And with that, that concludes my report.
And that brings us to item J, the adoption of the consent calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of consent calendar at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in this agenda denoted as type dash action consent, which items constitute the consent calendar, are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board or the superintendent requests that such items be removed from the consent calendar and voted upon separately. Do we have any items that need to be removed? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. George, you want to take the roll?
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Housel?
Yes.
Ms. Bissel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Board of Education, other, does anyone have any others? Mr. Miko?
I just wanted to let the five and a half listeners in our audience know that starting on Friday, August fifth at twelve AM through Sunday, August seventh at eleven fifty-nine PM, the sales tax holiday is on. So if you like to save money on school supplies, any item of clothing priced at seventy-five dollars or less, any item of school supplies priced at twenty dollars or less, and an item of school instructional material priced at twenty dollars or less will not have Ohio State sales tax applied to it. And that concludes my update.
Thank you. Any other, Board of Others? Hearing none. We do have need for executive session to discuss.
To consider the employment of a public employee.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Housel?
Yes.
Ms. Bissel?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will enter an executive session at eight twenty-five and we do not see a need to continue in public after. Have a great night and I think we have our first day of school before we meet again. So happy first day of school to our students. Can't wait for my Facebook feed to be filled with all their smiling faces. Go Mustangs.